Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting of July 14, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem. Oh, Canada, our man, native land, true patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts we see thee right to north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. I'll thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for leading today's O'Canada and to all of the delegates that are in the room, in the chambers today. I would like to take this opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Creed, Dene and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge that these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that opportunity. I will now go to item number four on today's agenda, the adoption of the previous council minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like council to adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held June 30th as presented.
That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue with errors or omissions, discussion or debate, so I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Okay. Well, now move to item number five on today's agenda, the adoption of the agenda, recognizing councillor Teason.
Well, I got in on this one. That's great. I would move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 6.1, Alberta Special Olympics, and item 7.2, Nighthawk Funding Agreement.
Perfect. Thanks for that motion. That motion is in order with those amendments. I see no one else in the queue, so I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. So now we move to item number six, which is the delegation portion of our meeting. And for those who are watching online or in the room, if you'd like to come speak to council, there's a really simple form you can fill out, Come Speak to Council. And when we have an evening session, there is always an evening option as well. Today, we are not, so there's only the afternoon option. We have two groups who are here to speak to us, the first being item 6.1, the Alberta Special Olympics. And if you're, I know you can't see watching online, but we have extremely full chamber with resident, representatives rather, of the Alberta Winter, Alberta Special Olympics Summer Games. And with that, I'll call Ms. Lisa Kirkoff to introduce our delegation today.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am joined here today by all of the Grand Prairie chapter that participated in the Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games that we had on the weekend. We had 60 local athletes and coaches participating in five of the 10 sports that we hosted. We've got several medals in the queue. I think 35 medals were won by several of our athletes, so great job to all of them. And then an opportunity to thank all the coaches for their tireless volunteer efforts to coach these athletes, to supervise throughout the weekend and to support these athletes in their, their quest for gold medals this weekend. So to the coaches, thank you very much. The weekend itself, we had lots of great feedback from community that was here. So over 20 cities were represented at the games this weekend, as I said, in 10 different sports located across Grand Prairie. We took care of them in hotels, we took care of them by feeding them, we offered a great opening ceremony and then even more fun dance on Saturday night. So it was a great time to be, to be here. Our local athlete ambassadors, so Kaylee, Savannah and Stephen that have been marketing, helping with marketing efforts for the games, all participated this weekend. Stephen had, I think, the best round of his life for golf on Saturday. Yes, so kudos to Stephen. And then we had both Kaylee and Savannah winning medals in both of their sports, so swimming and bocce, so great job on their part as well. And with that, I will take any questions from council if you have anything about the weekend.
Perfect. So I'll open it up to my colleagues. I will just say that this weekend was an incredible opportunity for our community to get out, see the kindness and the compassion that was shared, not only between the athletes, but between the coaches and the volunteers and the sponsors. It was so much fun this weekend. I'm so proud of this delegation of athletes. They did incredible work, knowing that we, and I'll read the medalists here in a moment, but I'll open it up to my colleagues, but just to know that we had 15 gold medals, 13 silver medals and seven bronze medals, 35 in total. And you guys truly represented us extremely well and you made Grand Prairie proud. So I want to thank you all. I will read the medalists, but I'll open it up to my colleagues first in case they have any questions. Recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was so proud to be at the opening ceremonies and to hear the oath made. Let me win, I'll be happy, but most of all, if I don't win, I'll be brave. And that, sorry.
Councillor Blackmore.
I just want to reiterate, we're so proud of everyone in this room, we're so proud of how hard you worked all weekend and in the weeks leading up to the Special Olympics. And we're so proud at how good you made the city of Grand Prairie look. So thank you very much.
Councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I've been in Grand Prairie 34 years and I was commenting during the opening ceremonies that in my 34 years, that was the proudest moment I've been of our city, not only for the athletes, but for everybody that put that together. Thank you, Lisa, to you and your team, because I know how hard you've worked, or I have some idea how hard you worked. And so thank you and to your team for heading this up and making all of us so proud this weekend. So thank you.
Councillor Teas, councillor Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, Lisa, for all the hard work you put in and especially for getting me that volunteer position on the bocce fields. I know I left you hanging there for a bit. I wasn't sure where I was presenting medals, but I really appreciate it. And it was honestly the best way a guy could have spent his weekend. It's my favorite weekend so far this year, so that really comes in light of all the athletes and how great they were to each other. And just a quick, quick story, I got to watch the gold medal bocce winning team in Division Four, our own Kaylee's team with Liam and Nikki and Will, all winning gold. But there was a moment where, as an official, you questioned, well, is that lady's feet in the box or not? And, you know, when I saw that one of our participants that was playing against our Grand Prairie team wasn't officially in the box when she made the throw, but it was the shot that stuck, it was the shot that counted. Our Grand Prairie team, being great ambassadors, cheered for the other team getting that shot. And it made me so happy and so proud, not just of our community, but of the upstanding individuals that make up our community and formed our Special Olympics team. And I think that was just a reflection of where all our athletes were when it came to supporting each other and the other athletes who came. So thank you so much, everybody, for being so good of a representative to our community. Thank you.
Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I had the ability to cook hamburgers and hot dogs for all the parents from out of town and residents here as well. And they turned to me, each and every one of them, and said, thank you very much, this has never been offered to us before, you guys are doing a fine job. Not going to speak about the dance, because that's private stuff, right? But John Travolta would have been just amazed. Let's leave it at that. Yeah, no, there's no negativity at these games. Everything was positive. And when someone made a good shot or kind of not so good, there was still cheering going on. And I think everybody that's not a person that's ever witnessed Special Olympics should attend just to see how games should be done. Thank you, coaches. Thank you, parents. Thank you, athletes. Kaylee, you did a good job. Savannah, Lane and Stephen. And there's a guy over there that I recognize. Yeah, I am. I was there when he, I was there when he teed off on Sunday and it was a beautiful drive. And did you, did you get a medal? What kind of medal? Oh, no way. Well, thank you very much. I do want to say thank you to all of the administration, all the coaches, once again, and the board that, I don't know, we pulled it off, I guess, and, and all the volunteers, spouses, family members of employees here that supported these games. And I'm looking forward to the next one. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton.
I'm just going to take a moment here to read the medal winners and I'll go relatively quickly as there's lots of them. I want to congratulate the following individuals. In athletics, Christina Pitt with two gold medals. In bocce ball, Team Lightning Strikes got a bronze medal, which was Captain Darrell Lutet, Donna Hatton, Brian Erickson, Annette Spence and Coach Laura Anderson. Also in bocce ball, Team Hailstones got a bronze medal, Captain Doug Hut, Mackenzie Bouchard, Tricia Kramer, Michelle Walker and Coach Wanda Burke. In bocce ball as well, Team Storm Chasers got a gold medal, Captain Liam Burke, William Mickelson, Kaylee Kramer, Nikki King and Coach Max Bouchard. In swimming, Steve Granjon Bay, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing you wrong, your name incorrectly, three silver medals. Sean Winter, one gold medal. Noah Backland, two gold and one silver. Francine Scott, one gold and one bronze. Sarah Shin, two gold and one silver. Emma Holt, one gold. Amber Shaw, one bronze. Savannah Lucier, one gold. Golf, Brandon Mercier, gold. Doug Idia, gold. And then in team sports, silver, Elizabeth Dirdle, Ashley Malcolm, Lyle Cratchin, Ken Freerman. Women's double silver, Elizabeth Dirdle and Ashley Malcolm. Men's double silver, Anthony Drieger and Andrew Dixon. Men's double silver, Ken Fennerman and Lyle Cratchin. Men's doubles bronze, Zach Frost, Josh Greer. Men's double gold, Ken Patricia, Chris McKee. Individual women's silver, Ashley Malcolm. Individual women's gold, Nicole Waschoo. Individual women's silver, Elizabeth Dirdle. Individual men's Division Three, Anthony Drieger, Ken Fennerman got a silver and Anthony a bronze. Individual men's Division Four, Chris McKee. Individual men's Division Five, Chris, or Josh Greer rather, got a bronze and Kevin Patricia is silver. Absolutely incredible, you guys. Truly just excellent work from the moment that, at the beginning of this term, if you weren't aware, council decided they wanted to show the province and the world more about our, about our incredible city. And we've done that by hosting Alberta Winter Games and being the first community to host the National Aboriginal Hockey Championships. But the piece that we're most proud of is what happened this past weekend. This is something that, from the day that the ambassadors started to see them in the hallways of City Hall and see them in the community, sharing the word and telling people to volunteer and asking sponsors to get involved. And the, the work that Lisa and her team did is second to none in regards to the coaches and the people that I met across the weekend that were just blown away by our community. And that was an incredible feat. And so I thank you all. The time, the work, the dedication that you've put in makes us proud. It also is a great way to show what a great place Grand Prairie is to live and to raise a family and to invest. So thank you, on behalf of council, your exceptional ambassadors, and we're truly proud of you. So congratulations to everyone. We're going to do a picture with everyone, but we're going to do it outside because we think it'll be too crowded in here. So if those who are watching online can give us a moment, we will be back. But again, kudos to all of you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say thank you to the parents that raised these fine people.
Thank you.
Well, welcome back to the July 14, 2025 council meeting. And thank you so much for your patience as we took an opportunity to go outside and get a great group shot celebrating all the athletes and parents and officials and volunteers that were here on behalf of the Alberta Special Olympics Summer Games Grand Prairie contingent. So thank you to the administration for organizing that on very quick notice. I really appreciate that. Moving on to today's agenda, under item 6.2, the Helping Hands Society. If you recall, council, we, in the near recent future, had supported Helping Hands in regards to finding somebody to help facilitate and find efficiencies and within our food insecurity concerns in the city of Grand Prairie. So Helping Hands is here to update us on how this is going. And I will call forward. I apologize, I don't know who is... Oh, there she is. I thought you were going to be here. So, okay, come on forward. Ms. McNabb is here. And introduce who you're with. And your microphones are on. So when you get a moment, just, they're not attached to the table. Pull them forward closer to you so they pick up your voices. Take your five minutes to introduce, or to speak to council, rather. And if there is questions, I'll open up to council following your presentation. So, welcome.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for having us today. My name's Dallas Sather McNabb. I'm Executive Director at North Reach Society, and Helping Hands is a division of that. This is Erica Gilroy, who is our Food Security Coordinator, that just started back from a mat leave about three weeks ago. So she's getting baptized by fire here. I apologize, we had a PowerPoint. We're having technical difficulties, so I'll just be using this kind of as reference for what we're going to talk about.
And so just, I know somebody will ask you later, can you maybe just have somebody email it to us?
Yeah.
So we have it for reference.
For sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So today, what we're here to do is just give a bit of an update on how things have been going for us and to give you some numbers as to kind of what we've achieved so far going forward. So our vision... So just to give a reminder, the vision is a Grand Prairie where everyone has equitable food access to nutritious culturally appropriate food. And our mission is to create a collaborative and coordinated approach to food security that empowers individuals, reduces duplication, and builds long-term sustainability through community partnerships. So the Food Leadership Table is something that has been put together in order for there to be collaboration within the community to address food insecurity. So this is to strengthen collaboration, improve the coordination within our community. So just to give a quick download on who's on this committee, it includes Helping Hands, Grand Prairie Family Ed Society, Sunrise House, the Salvation Army, Wapiti Community Support Association, the Mustard Seed, Grand Prairie Catholic School District, 55 North Community Centre, Grand Prairie Public School District, Grand Prairie Friendship Centre, the Kawahish Foundation, and the city of Grand Prairie. So what we're doing is we're working right now quite hard on decreasing the barriers in order for folks to be able to access food. So Helping Hands was established in 2013 as response to the need of healthy and hearty options. What?
Good PowerPoint.
Oh. Okay, well, keep going until they catch up. So it was established in 2013 as response to the need for healthy and hearty options for people accessing food security. In 2021, North Reach Society and Helping Hands came together to address the need. They needed space to collect and food and store it, as well as a space to build hampers. In 2024, the two partnering agencies legally amalgamated. And in December 2024, it was announced that Helping Hands will be the backbone agency to lead the Food Security Leadership Table, as well as to continue to run and grow the food pantry. In May 2024, Helping Hands reopened and became a shopping model. So I'm just actually going to let Erica... We need to pop forward a few more steps. I'm going to have Erica talk you through a little bit very quickly about this shopping model and how it works.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, council. So the model that we're using now is a shopping model in the sense that folks come in and they pick what they want for their families. They pick and they can choose out of the food that we are getting from Food Banks Alberta, as well as the food that we are collecting and providing for our families each week. So we right now have about 30 people that come into a shop. And you can see up there, there's a video as well. I don't know if it'll work up there. But it's just an idea of what the shopping space looks like. So it looks like a traditional store.
Give us one sec, okay?
Absolutely.
There we go. Perfect. Please continue.
So this is our shopping model. As you can see, that each of the shelves are kind of aligned with all the different products that we have, and that's what people can come and take from. So each week, we provide seasonal fruits and veggies, milk, cheese, yogurt, anything that is kind of missing to make full, healthy, nutritious meals.
And then through this, we've also, through the extra food allotments we've been getting from Food Banks Alberta, we've been able to give extra snacks to organizations like SLC and Wapiti House. So extra chips, extra kind of to-go food that works well around things like that. Soup, potatoes, and snacks have also been provided to the Elder's Caring Shelter, Friendship Centre, the Friendship, or GPFES, and Sunrise House. So that's kind of where we land with that. We can go to the next slide.
Next slide, it's just a video of the space.
That's okay, we can skip over that. You guys have seen the picture. Humble beginnings, as you can see. But we are able to have a real good turnaround on the food coming in. So the food coming in is going out right away. Next slide, please. Okay, so here is just a few testimonials. We won't read through them all, but we'll send you the PowerPoint so you can read the testimonials from a few folks that have been able to access the services and just the feelings and opportunities that they have around being able to pick out their own food. One thing to note, too, is what we've noticed is less food is going out per family now that they're picking their own food. So when people are given that choice model, they're taking the food they need, not what we think they need. And they're actually taking less food per family member. So next, we can jump over the next couple of slides. So we're the only food security agency in Grand Prairie that is associated with Food Banks Alberta. We've been fortunate to have been made members of Food Banks Alberta. With that has come a lot of advantages for us. The two key ones being the provision of a forklift and the provision of a reef...
Like freezer, like 45 feet.
So a freezer trailer. When they send us extra food, we can store it in there until we need to hand it out. The other opportunity with that is because of our centralized location, Food Banks Alberta has made us a hub, which means 13 partner food banks throughout the Northwest will be receiving their allotments through us. So the food will come to us, and then they come pick up their allotments from Food Banks Alberta, and they don't have to pay the shipping. And we don't have to pay the shipping because we're willing to store the food. Yeah. So next slide, please. Any questions for us? Anything you'd like us to expand on?
Okay, so thank you for your presentation. I'll open up to council for questions of the delegation recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thanks, Erica and Dallas. So a couple of, I guess, quick questions. Do the people, do they need an appointment, or is it drop-in?
So when people are... So right now, we have a waitlist. As they've come up on the waitlist, they get a signup genius, and they get to pick the time on either day. So usually, we have two days a week. This week, it's Thursday, or Tuesday and Thursday. And they get to pick the time that works best for them.
And where do they find that? Is it online, I'm assuming?
It gets sent to each person individually, and they get to pick out.
But if somebody has never been through the process before, where would they sign up, or where would they access it?
So we have an online form where everybody signs up for the, like, application. And then from the application, that's where we would go through the waitlist and get people to come in to do their shopping.
And can you tell us that website?
Yeah, it's a Microsoft form through our Facebook page.
Oh, through Facebook, okay. All right. And where are you guys located?
So we're located in the High Quality Building, which is the old warehouse where we used to be, just across from Bubbles Car Wash.
Oh, okay. All right, you've cleaned it up well. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Are you the only food bank in Grand Prairie that's distributing food from Alberta Food Services?
Food Banks Alberta.
Yeah, so the Legion wouldn't be part of the group that comes from you or the Karen on the Boulevard or nothing like that?
Yep.
Okay. No, thanks for clearing that up. I appreciate that.
Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. When we started this process of trying to align all of our food services into one loose kind of organization, there was, we knew of a lot more food bank or a lot more food distributors than you have on your list. I can think of, for example, the Veterans Food Bank. And I'm wondering if you're having trouble communicating with all of those groups or if there's anything that we can do to bring more people to the table so that we become less fragmented in the whole food security issue?
So I think, I've only been in this position for a month now. So I've been working really hard to get connected with our other community, like, food security agencies. But a lot of people are also on vacation and just trying to get connected with everybody. But that's the intention over the next few weeks, is to really get in contact with everybody, to also build part of that list of, like, where can you access supports if Helping Hands can't help you, if the Salvation Army can't help you? This is where, oh, sorry, the next step would be.
Okay. I noticed on Reddit thread just a couple of days ago, someone was asking the general question of how do I access food banks? So I think that we need to really keep working on communicating to people where intake is and where opportunities for help lie. But thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Teason.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming in today and for giving us this update. Really appreciate to hear where it's going and just sort of what the model has taken on as far as how we distribute our food and give people that choice. That's the basis for my question today. So of the list of the list of groups that work with you, you mentioned the Salvation Army. Now, you said you also had the choice model. So I would assume Salvation Army is kind of, I don't know, a bulk model? So how do you collaborate with the Salvation Army in case somebody wanted to choose something but still get stuff for the cupboard for later, like dry food goods and stuff like that? Is there a lot of collaboration between you and the Salvation Army in serving the people that are in need?
So everything is a process. But the Salvation Army does sit on this community table and participates in the conversations around all of those things. So the goal is to continue to collaborate and find ways to use innovation to work together and open up communication. Obviously, there's some barriers around organizational rules when it comes to information sharing and those kinds of things, but we are working on it. Yeah.
Elsora O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Dallas and Erica, for giving this update. I'm just curious again on the regards to the Salvation Army. As you know, the Rotary Clubs all work together to do a food bank drive. Have you made arrangements with them to store all the food they collect? And should they ask people to donate differently to meet the needs of the shopping model that you have?
Wow, I think that's a conversation that I would love to be able to have with the Salvation Army and with Rotary, as opposed to kind of stating what I think that various organizations should do. I do think there is room for us to work together in the storing and distribution of food with us having that focus. We do also provide dry goods, right? The canned food and those kinds of things as well. So I think it's that ongoing conversation as we move forward is how we can collaborate together. But I don't have an exact answer for that until we can work together on it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just curious then, when we approve the model for you to go ahead and hire somebody in the process, we funded you $80,000 a year for two years. I'm just curious as to where is that in the process going forward as we continue trying to link all of the organizations that are having food security issues?
So that's a really good question. Thank you for that. We actually have not spent any of that money yet. We're very early days. So we're using some other resources right now in order to pay Erica. The decisions will be made at the table as a group.
We'd hope to be updated as you progress down this path. And I think it's, sounds like you've started something very good. So thank you.
Councillor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks, ladies, for the update on it. Just curious on the storage and distribution side. Like, so are you guys near max capacity, or are you kind of half? If you could, you got room. And so if you could work with some of the organizations to be the food storage and distribution place, that's still the goal? Like, you don't feel like you're bursting at the seams yet? Okay. And can I just get a, I mean, maybe you mentioned, I might have missed it, but how many members are starting to use your shopping program and the folks that are...
Since May of 2025, so that's actually the second week of May 2025, we've had 257 individuals and families to come in and shop. 240 regular visits, 17 were unplanned visits, 92 children were supported, three seniors, and seven people with disabilities.
Okay. And just out of those 240 regular, would they also be accessing still? Because this is relatively, are they still using the Food Bank and Salvation Army or other models? Or are you able to...
It's hard for us to say.
No, okay.
We're not privy to that information. So that's definitely a data sharing type of goal is really something that the table would like to establish.
Okay, so you guys are talking about data sharing and trying to figure out how to support those folks the best. Okay, thank you.
I see no one else in the queue. I just had a comment. You know, I appreciate the update. It's great to hear the wins, the association collaboration with Food Banks Alberta, seeing the people around the table. I think that will only continue to grow as more people start to see how that fits. I really, what I look forward to in the future updates is seeing where those collaboration and integration and the removal of duplication of services so that everybody, not everybody needs to do the same thing and not everybody can do the same thing. So to find those efficiencies. End of the day, council's goal is to reduce and improve food security. And so adding this around in our community, while there's other great groups doing exceptional things as well, is a huge win. So thank you for the work to date. I look forward to hearing continual updates on how it's going. And you'll only continue to find efficiencies. And as we get closer to winter, that's a huge win for our community. So thanks so much for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, moving under reports for today. Item 7.1, the Youth Advisory Council 2024 to 2025 Annual Term Report. As you also can't see the audience, we have a great representation from our Youth Advisory Council. And for introduction, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tucker.
Good afternoon and thank you, Mayor Clayton and council for inviting the Youth Advisory Council to present their 2024-25 annual report. I'd like to welcome Miriam Nazinda, Tanu Namzat, EJ Ego, and Iman Haseeb to the delegation table. Right now, they're just setting up their presentation, but I will be turning it over to the YAC members to highlight the activities and achievements outlined in their report.
Thank you for that introduction. And we'll give it a moment for the IT to get loaded up. As mentioned, I think previously, this is the largest youth council that the city of Grand Prairie has had. A great uptake in the number of members on the Youth Advisory Council and a really broad, diverse demographic in age from all different schools across the city. And so I have had the opportunity to step into a couple of their meetings. And I know my council colleagues that represent council on the Youth Advisory Council give us regular updates of the great work they're doing. So I'm looking forward to your report. And whenever you're ready, feel free to start.
Thank you. My name is Miriam, and it is my pleasure as vice chair of the Youth Advisory Council to present our annual report to city council. The YAC mandate is all about giving young people in Grand Prairie a voice. We work to provide an effective link between community boards and committees, city council, community agencies, and the youth, the Grand Prairie youth. This term, we had eighteen active members, as well as councillors Berg and O'Connor, and our city administration, Tammy Mellon. I'd like to acknowledge our dedicated YAC members this term. Our Chair, Daisy Nellis, Vice Chair, Miriam Nazinda, Secretary, Tanu Namzat, Agenda Creator, Nabeel Malik, and remaining members, Iraj Parashar, Raphael Malik, Grace Larson, Attiche Gol, Manya Singal, Iman Haseeb, EJ Ego, Emma Dwyer, Kennedy Brol, Angelie Fay Pedrono, Sam Elwood, Caleb Thomas, Timvinder Rupana, and Emma Shropshire. We are grateful to councillor Berg and councillor O'Connor for their ongoing mentorship and commitment to supporting youth voices. I'll now pass it over to Tanu to speak more about our community engagement.
Thank you, Miriam. This year offered many opportunities for leadership and community engagement. YAC held six monthly meetings at city hall and hosted ten delegations, allowing members to learn from local organizations and exchange ideas. The delegations this term included: City of Grand Prairie Occupational Health and Safety, Community Helpers Program, Grand Prairie Local and Immigration Partnership, Recovery Alberta, Special Olympics, Kool-Aid Society, Grand Prairie Kickstand, Phoenix and Griffin Youth Group, Soaring Fund, and Sandrite House. Outside of our formal meetings, we also had the chance to explore Grand Prairie through a series of learning tours. We had some fun touring the Activity and Reception Center, tried our hand at lawn bowling in Musquesee Park, and got an inside look at city hall and the council chambers.
Several of our YAC members took part in ten local events to build community connections. These included the National Addictions Awareness Week Skate, Coldest Night of the Year, Christmas Tree Light Up, Thriving in the City at Northwestern Polytechnic, An Evening with Grand Prairie, Women of Influence, State of the City, City Scrub, Youth Career Discovery Expo, and the 2026 Budget Stakeholders Session. Attending local events provides an opportunity to connect with other youth and demonstrate our support for community initiatives, while also increasing our visibility and presence within the community.
A key highlight this term was running our interactive booth at the Youth Career Discovery Expo, where we asked our peers, if you were on city council, what would you do? We received many thoughtful responses, but the three top priorities that we identified were better access to mental health supports, and this was the number one concern that youth had addressed, more sports facilities in the community, and updates to the school curriculum with more options for different learning styles. Hearing directly from youth helps shape YAC's focus and makes our work more inclusive and impactful. We also strengthen our relationship with city council through a mixer event and regular visits from councillors Berg and O'Connor, which fostered ongoing dialogue and collaboration.
Overall, it's been an incredible year, and I'm proud of the work we have done to represent young people and help make Grand Prairie a more inclusive, youth-friendly community. I can't wait to see what Youth Advisory Council can do next term. Thank you for championing youth engagement in our city and giving us the opportunity to build a more inclusive and empowered Grand Prairie.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up to council in case they may have questions. First, I recognize councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. And as you well know, when councillor O'Connor and I are here, we're over where you guys are, and you have all of our seats. And so that's kind of cool seeing you guys over there for a change. I just want to compliment, I actually got just as much, if not more, from this year's youth council than you guys did. It was great to see the great mix of personalities, but also how driven and how intelligent you are. And I've complimented to my colleagues here on city council that the city's future is in great hands. And it's because of people like you and the initiatives that you're driving. And so, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I as well will pass that on. How engaged you were and how many questions you had. You even taught me how to ask better questions. Thank you for that. And you're-
I thank them for that.
Yeah, you gotta wear it. So anyway, thank you so much. I'm very encouraged, as is councillor Berg, of how you've stepped up in the role and said, hey, we're concerned about vaping, we're concerned about drugs in school, we're concerned about these issues. And how do we go about doing something about it? And I think that is stepping up, and that's the purpose of why this has been the best year of the Youth Advisory Council ever. So I can't take that credit. It's, you need to take that credit. Thank you for doing what you've done. Thank you.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much, youth council. I was very privileged to start, I guess, this, this term with y'all. And then I got replaced by Grant. But that's only fair because I've done eight out of twelve years on my time on council, working with youth council. And I can see from my own experience, a lot of youth come into youth council and they say, okay, how are we going to change the world? But they don't take a pause to understand how those changes happen in the governance level and structure of the way our government works. And what I really admired about this iteration of youth council, and I think it built momentum because we kept having to add members, add members, add members, is that that's the first thing that this group wanted to know, is, okay, we want to understand the city, we want to understand how it operates. And now we can move forward and make the changes that we want to make and be those ambassadors that we want to and do true governance. And so I applaud you all for, for taking this role very seriously and governance very seriously, because it is kind of what runs and leads the world right now. So as far as my questions, it was, you guys had a real high bar. You got eighteen members now. I think EJ was the last member to officially join under my tenure. And then you had other people join. But how are you guys doing with recruitment now? Do you have new youth that are looking forward to coming on in the fall and signing up? And I'll let you ask that, and then I have one more question.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair. So even last year, we had a pretty big youth council. And a lot of us who were on that council already enjoyed our term so much that we were like recruiting our friends at school. We were telling, letting everyone know. And like, I know a lot of us are in school clubs already, so we had a lot of insight. And we also had a lot of connections that we let people know. And I know that our, our council this year is made up of a lot of people who are seniors in high school and we are leaving. So I know that a lot of us are like trying to recruit our younger siblings and trying to make them more inclusive and more involved in the city.
Okay, awesome. So we're looking forward to big numbers again next year?
Yeah.
That's, that's super great. And so do you feel, now, how many of you sitting at the table right now are returning? I know some of you have graduated. All right, so we got three out of the five here returning. So of, of what you, I guess, did a census with your, your peers, they said mental health and more access to sports facilities, recreation facilities for youth. Is that the direction you feel the youth council might go this year? Or are there other big priorities that you might add on to that list? I know it's still early, but you know, you got to plant the seed early in order to get the fruit later.
Thank you for the question. I think next year, we can address more on addiction, like vaping and drugs in schools and our youth, because it's a huge problem right now, especially in like the high schools. And I, and now I'm hearing about it also in the, in our KDAH schools as well. So I think that's one of our things that we can discuss next year further. So thank you.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you so much. I look forward to what youth council brings next year as well as what they brought this year. Thank you.
I see no one else in the queue. So I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for the work that you're doing to represent our youth. And thank you for the commitment that you've given to not only the organization and the city of Grand Prairie, but for your demographic in our community. We are a very young community, and having such a strong youth council is extremely important. I really appreciate your comment at the end in regards to vaping. And it's something that's been on my mind for a long time, flavored vapes and, and youth and, and really that issue in society is, is something that I'm looking forward to hear what you learn about and, and look forward to the report back to council as you learn that. So thank you so much and appreciate you coming today. Thanks so much. All right. So that was item 7.1. I'm looking for business arising from that item. Oh, I apologize. I'll wait for the screen to come back. There we go. That was item 7.1 on today's agenda, and I'm looking for business arising, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move, council received this report for information.
Thank you for that, councillor O'Connor. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.2 today, you'll see in the agenda, the Nighthawk Funding Agreement. The motion is in your council, or in your package, rather, council. This is in regards to a four-party funding agreement between the Grand Prairie Ski Club, operating as Nighthawk, Year-Round Adventure Park, as well as the city, the county, and the MD of Greenview, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd be happy to make the motion if you have no one in the queue.
Nope.
I would move council approve, in principle, a four-party funding agreement for the Grand Prairie Ski Club, operating as Nighthawk Year-Round Adventure Park, and direct administration to execute the funding agreement subject to the satisfaction of the city solicitor and the city manager. And in speaking to that, Nighthawk is a key, it's really important for our winters to have a place to recreate, and Nighthawk is key in providing some of those services. While they are in the MD of Greenview, they certainly provide services to the city of Grand Prairie, the county of Grand Prairie, and more. And so for that reason, it's important to have a four-way funding contract, which is unusual when it comes to funding our recreational facilities. But in this case, because it's surrounded by three municipalities, it's three municipalities and Nighthawk will be signing.
Great. Thanks for that, councillor Blackmore. That motion is in order. Discussion or debate? Recognize, or questions for administration? Recognizing councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Happy to support this motion. I want to just thank the administrations from all the three municipalities that have done the work on this. This is a huge step for peace of mind, I think, for Jonathan's team to have some certainty on funding moving forward and knowing there's an agreement in place. Also, I just want to thank our organization and again, this collaborative nature of our region that we just continue to do. This is just another example of, of great work within our municipalities to see the bigger picture on this. So happy to support.
Thanks for that, councillor Plott. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business for today, under item 8.1, the Operational Services Committee meeting held on July 8. And I'll turn this one over to councillor Plott for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held July 8 as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I see councillor Tool. Is it for something else? Or is it on the, okay. So I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. A couple items of business today, councillor Plott.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. We had a report from administration. So I'd like to make a motion that Operational Services Committee recommend, oh, sorry, that was a recommendation. Just to speak to this, this started a process back in, in 2023 of May. Senator 2000 determined the most appropriate location. And then the Senator 2000 Board passed a motion to support the project. And through this process, it's been determined that they need a 10-year lease. And I think currently, we're only at a four years. So council approved an option to lease agreement, term extension from four years to 10 years between the city of Grand Prairie and Sure Charge Corp.
Perfect. So that motion is in order. Recall to council that this was discussed at the standing committee. However, as mentioned, this is an extension. It is an opportunity on a project that had already been started. I see no one in the queue, so I'll call the question. Please vote.
Plott in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Plott, the other item of business.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. We had a report about our urban forest strategy, and this council's been very aggressive on wanting to do more trees. And our administration's been doing a great job of giving those opportunities. So this is another piece in that puzzle of us getting more forestry, I think, in our community and looking at a bigger lens. So I just moved that council approve the urban forest strategy as presented in attachment one.
Thanks for that, councillor Plott. Recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I do have one question in the report, and it's on page 22, 4.1, Visions for Grand Prairie's Urban Forest. It actually has a vision statement. For administration, would this vision statement be passed with this report? Or do we need to make a separate motion to have this vision statement as part of our view on forestry?
I'm just going to give Chief Clavon a moment to get there.
Page 22, 4.1.
Chief Clavon?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I don't think you need a separate motion. And I, this doesn't change the, like, council's overall vision for the city, but just in relation to the, the strategy. So the vision that's been presented there is a beautiful, beautiful, vibrant, and healthy urban forest that enhances the well-being and quality of life for future generations to come.
Hey, thank you. I do have one point that I also kind of wanted to bring up that was outside of this umbrella. The benefit of trees, and I tried finding the report again, but I read it a couple of weeks ago, that having trees align boulevards and streets actually reduces speeding. Just the containment feel makes people feel that they have to drive a little bit slower, where I guess if you're in the country and there's nothing but flat fields around you, you might be tend to, you know, feel a little bit heavier on, on the gas pedal. But when you've got trees aligning a boulevard or a street, it actually is a safety thing where people slow down. And it's just natural function for, for humans to do that. So it's not necessarily in this report, but I still wanted to bring up another benefit around it.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg. Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I went through the report and I could not see if there was a target. And there compared us to a number of other cities at being, I think we're at seven percent. Is there a goal? think we're at 7%. Is there a goal that we need to get in compared to other cities or and how long will that take? How many trees will it take to get there? So, is our goal to be at 8%? 9%? What is that? I don't recall seeing it in the report.
Chief Glavine?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Uh, no, the report doesn't provide a percentage tree cover goal. Um, and part of the rationale was um the climate of Grand Prairie in the subregion that we're in is not directly comparable to, say, Edmonton. There's similarities to it. Um, the consultant didn't recommend putting one in, uh, and at this time, there isn't one in here or proposed.
So, um, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be having a discussion about setting a target? So we need to know how many trees would it be to be able to plant in a year or years or 10 years and to have a target? I think it's important. Right now, it's a little mamby pamby to me. So, I think we need a target and that's, that's, I think, a goal and we need to know what it would cost us to have a goal like that.
Counselor Blackmore?
Um, thank you. I have a question for Chief Glavine. In the report, it uh states that we are in a grow zone of 3 or 3.3B. And I have always been told previously that it's 2 or 2B and it specifically be because we have the freeze thaw cycle in January, February, March, somewhere in there. Um, is this different, new information or is it uh? Like, has our grow zone changed? Because it would be great if it did. We should aim for a 5, quite frankly.
To my knowledge, it actually has changed. So, and and I'm, I'm reading more that we're in a 3A and so 3, 3 to 3B is sort of, you know, the the goalposts. But, uh, yeah, I I did read that we have changed and with very various environmental factors, but I don't know if if Chief Glavine has something else to add in regards to that.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I don't have anything else to add aside from what the consultant supplied us for with the information, uh, which I assume is most current, but I I don't know for sure. But I'm seeing our Parks Director shake his head that yes, it is the most current that we have. Um, and I just wanted to, um, just perhaps add a little bit of context at a previous discussion on the tree coverage. Likely species and maturity of trees will have a lot to do with that. And just some of the newer areas of the city, being a newer city, you're going to get some of that percentage increase even if you did nothing as those trees mature. Um, but generally what we're saying in the strategy is increase, period, is that we're going to just continue to plant more trees and increase the coverage and you'll get some of that canopy uh coverage extended naturally over time as the existing urban forest matures.
Great. Thanks for that comment, that information. I see no one else in the queue, so I'll call the question on the first motion.
Plott in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Plott?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. During our committee meeting, um, there was some discussion around um some of the recommendations in the report. So, um, I'd like to move that council direct administration to bring a report, back a report with a strategy on how we protect trees on private lands. Um, there was discussion about this specifically on private lands and what what do we do with that? So, I think it's just an uh next steps for for our council to take to start putting those uh strategies in place.
Perfect. So that motion is in order, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm very much in support of this motion. Uh, I know that other communities um require that any tree that's removed from private land must be replaced by another tree. Um, I'm not sure that that's uh an appropriate action for us, but I would certainly like to see how we could build an incentive program to encourage people to be planting more trees in their, on their lots. Um, and I also, as mentioned at Standing Committee, I have a concern with herbicides and herbicide use uh because some herbicide use in the city is very detrimental to trees. Um, I'm not opposed to the use of herbicides at all, but I do feel that we need to look at some of the provincial standards that are requiring um that the uh applicating person or the applicator of the herbicide uh be qualified um rather than just being able to go um buy, round up, and apply it willy-nilly in 40K wins. So, um, I I look forward to seeing this report come back from council and or from administration and I'm really hoping there will be a section uh dealing with herbicide juice. Um, I don't have any real direction because I don't know what else is happening across the province, but that's what I'm looking for.
All right. Thanks for that comment. Uh, recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Uh, I don't think I'll be supporting this, uh, although it is just a report and and we're not approving, I guess, second steps. But I I just use my yard as an example. That when I moved in, there were 10 poplar trees that were planted like they were flowers. They were planted literally up against the house. Uh, there were some along both fence lines that were interfering with my neighbor's sprinkler system on one side and the other neighbor's stone deck on the other one and and the roots were upheaving. And so, uh, also this year, I took down a very large tree that I was quite concerned would fall on my neighbor's house. I don't want to have to go through a bunch of paperwork to get rid of trees that I feel were misplaced. Um, I I'm all for trees, but I also, um, if I buy a house and it's got apple trees and I don't want apple trees, I don't have to necessarily keep them. So, uh, I also read in the uh Urban Forest Strategy that during the consultations, the public generally was not in favor of something like this on private lands. Uh, so again, not a hill to die on for me if this passes to a report, but I I just can't see me supporting something where we regulate the type of trees or how many trees people have in their yards.
Thanks for those comments. Recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I largely agree with Counselor Berg, although I also really agree with Counselor Blackmore in terms of, I would love to have some discussion around what are some carrots instead of sticks that we can provide to either preserve trees or even more importantly, in my mind, get new trees planted on private property. And also if there's work that needs to be done about regulating herbicide use in the city, again, not banning it, but regulating it, I've got some upside for that maybe as well. But I don't think this motion does that. I think that when it comes to protecting trees on private land, that's such a nuanced thing that is a really complicated subject. Right now, on my property, I've got 48 trees on my property. I don't think the city really wants to get into, uh, do I, am I allowed to cut down one of those trees? Same time, I get why some people would want to say, hey, I can't completely depop- depopulate my, depopulate my lot because that really would change the feel of, you know, the block. But that's a really nuanced conversation that I think we should have more robust conversation around before we have administration going and doing a bunch of work and guessing what council might have an upside for. So, this is a report that I don't think we've talked enough about. So I think we're asking administration to do what could be a lot of work, guessing what our will is and to bring back reports that ultimately I don't know if council will have appetite to support. So, I can't support this particular motion, although happy to have this conversation, keep on going in other, less formal, less administratively burdened in some ways.
All right. No one else in the queue. Counselor Tool?
Uh, I don't think we have estate homes where we have heritage trees there, but I would like to see something in the future regarding uh a tree of a certain size that's maybe a, an oak tree or something that's not necessarily, or may have some historic value, that we protect that in the, in the past that we haven't. And, uh, we tried to move a birch tree one time, but uh, I I I don't, I don't agree with uh, you know, a little four-inch poplar that's grown and it's causing all kinds of stuff. But there are some, uh, there could be some heritage trees in the, in the future that we should be looking at. So, uh, just a comment, that's all.
I will support this motion. I, there are heritage trees in our community. When you look in older subdivisions such as VLA, Swan Haven, there are trees that are significant in size and in their development. I think it's important to recognize that council isn't looking to um skew the conversation around what the report is. I think the report will be relatively easy for administration. There are many, many municipalities that already have these systems in place, whether it's the size of tree you're replacing with. Some communities have a fi- um, a permit fee that's associated with the removal of a tree and in addition, the expectation of the size of tree. So, I think this is valuable information. Doesn't mean that the next council or this council is setting out to uh change existing uh criteria or conversations, but it's valuable information because there are significant trees in our community that are of mature, maturity. They bring um the aesthetics that council is hoping to achieve. And one of the reasons we did an urban forest strategy is so we could see what's possible. So, I think that this is an opportunity to provide more information, to see what's possible. And if we're truly invested in, in an urban strategy, because we believe in the enhancement and the addition of trees to our community, then all cards on the table, all information is valuable. So, I will support this motion. Counselor Plott to close. Oh, my apologies. It was Counselor O'Connor's motion. Counselor Plott?
Sorry, no, I.
Counselor O'Connor to close.
I made, I made this motion. Did I know it?
No, it says O'Connor. Oh, sorry. My apologies. It is. If O'Connor, do you have something to add? And then I'll go to Counselor Plott to close. Okay, okay. Counselor Plott to close.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, I can, I can hear the concerns from Counselor Bressi and Berg. I don't, I don't, if this report comes back and it's uber-prescriptive of we're going to start fining and penalizing things, that wouldn't be my intent. I do want to find out what other communities are doing. Um, the urban forest strategy is important to us. We, we can only plant so many trees on the taxpayers' dollars to make our community look beautiful. At some point, it's going to be on our community to to continue to look after their yards and make this community look even better. Um, so I I think it's just a good report for us to get back on it. Um, it could be a bunch of educational components that come back, that we're just trying to get homeowners understanding how to help their trees grow and to help them make them healthier. We're, we're not sure 100% what's come back, but I do want to keep the urban strategy moving forward. And I feel like without pushing some of these motions through, I don't want this to be a shelf, this thing that just sits on the shelf. So I think this is one of those report that comes back to just give council another touch point so we can have more conversations about it. So hopefully you can support.
Thanks for that. Close, Counselor Plott. I'll call the question. And that carries 6 to 2. Uh, highlights from your meeting, Counselor Plott?
Turn my own mic off. Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Uh, it was mostly business arising, other than we did have some um service area updates from Chief Glavine. Um, under Engineering and Transportation Services, night shifts are underway filling potholes for tunnel intersections to minimize traffic disruptions. Want to thank administration for that. I think that's a great initiative. Um, the following have been posted for RFQs, a 2025 concrete grinding and Crystal Lake tree planting project in partnership with RFRIAA. In corporate facility manage, the Bonnet Centre exterior door replacement project is nearing completion. The South entrance exterior concrete slab replacement async schedule is scheduled for today. And Center 2000 Sundell Record Mediation Project has been awarded. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Counselor Plott. Moving on to item 8.2, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held July 8th. And I'll turn this one over to Counselor Blackmore for introduction.
Um, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held July 8th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. So, I see no one in the queue. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Uh, one item of business today, Counselor Blackmore.
Uh, yes, we are making some, uh, cleaning up some bylaws, uh, bylaw C-1489. And, uh, the reason for this is just to clean up the definition of peace officer, um, to include uh some technical details about, and also to uh make it less gender-specific. Um, so I would start by moving that council give first reading to bylaw C-1489, being the definition of police officer amending bylaw.
Thanks for that motion. That motion is in order.
And I misspoke. It's peace officer, not police officer.
So, first reading to bylaw C-1489, being the definition of peace officer amending bylaw. Um, that motion is in order, Counselor Blackmore, and there is no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore?
And I would move council give second reading to bylaw C-1489.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. An opportunity for questions for administration, discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore?
I'd move that council have third reading of this bylaw at this meeting.
Perfect. That motion is in order. And in order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore?
And I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1489, being the definition of peace officer amending bylaw.
Thank you for that motion. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Blackmore?
Uh, yes, indeed. Um, this is always a busy area. So, uh, I'll start with enforcement services. Uh, police officers were deployed on bike patrols throughout the downtown core and Musquesee Park during Canada Day celebrations. And, uh, education campaign was launched on June 25th, beginning with property owners within the Swan, Swan Haven neighborhood. Residents received an information flyer highlighting the dangers of releasing domestic rabbits and the environmental impacts of an expanding feral rabbit population. The campaign reinforces key local bylaws, including the prohibition on feeding wild or feral animals. Uh, RCMP, several RCMP officers attended the Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow and Red Surge and had an opportunity to participate in the grand entries. Under events and programming, uh, there were over 20,000 people who attended the 2025 Canada Day celebrations, enjoying the Canada Day parade, festivities at Musquesee Park, and the evening fireworks display. More than 40 individuals registered for the Accessibility Pass Program, which received overwhelmingly positive feedback from families. The Grand Prairie Triathlon welcomed 340 participants, participants with 206 athletes taking part in Kids of Steel categories. The event was supported by over $16,000 in sponsorship from local businesses, and we very much thank those businesses for their support. Of that, 9,500 was dedicated to the Kids of Steel, enabling free registration for all participants 13 and under. Upcoming events include the Special Olympics, which we just enjoyed this past weekend, uh, the Western Canada Ribfest Tour, which will arrive this coming uh Friday, in uh July 18th to the 20th. Uh, Crash Test Dummies will appear August 2nd and Heritage Day is also on August 2nd. The Bonnet Energy Centre box office has been busy supporting both city events and Northwest Polytechnic Theater performances. Summer camps have officially kicked off and currently, um, I think they're fully subscribed now. Under Housing and Community Development, the province has approved the city's 2024 Family and Community Support Services final report. Uh, program participation has grown steadily year over year, with 12,000 participants in 2022, 15,000 in 2023, and over 26,000 in 2024. This is a significant increase and reflects rising demands for FCS, FCSs funded services, particularly among children, youth, and families in our community. While participation has increased, volunteer engagement has declined since 2022, and this is due in part to the closure of the Grand Prairie Regional Association of Volunteer Organizations. Uh, Grand Prairie Fire Department has noted a quite an increase in uptake for the Fire Smart Home assessments, which is really good to hear, with approximately 80 now completed. Fire Smart representatives were on site at the July 1st Canada Day festivities and reported significant in interest with an estimated 1,000 citizen interactions throughout the day. Uh, Grand Prairie Fire Department has responded to over 1,100 incidents between April 1st and June 30th, uh, which suggests that 2025 is on track to be another busy year. This included 570 medical, 327 alarms, 61 motor vehicle collisions, 24 structure fires, 19 wildfires, and 22 outside fires, which usually refers to dumpsters, as well as eight vehicle fires. Uh, in emergency management between April and June, the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership, or GPREP, supported three Partnership, or GPREP, supported three emergency activities: the Deer Ridge Estate Fire, the Kiskatno, or otherwise known as Kelly Lake Fire, and the Margaret Edson Manor Fire. And that concludes my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Appreciate those highlights. Moving on in today's agenda, there is no correspondence, but we'll move to delegation. Oh, I've jumped ahead. My apologies. Moving to now the 8.3? Thank you. The Investment and Strategy Committee meeting of July 8th. And I will turn this one over to Counselor Bressi for introduction. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I was trying to get you out of the meeting completely.
Well, it's hard when my radiant presence isn't right in the room, I understand.
Absolutely.
I'd move that council adopt the minutes for the Investment and Strategy Committee meeting held July 8th as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. One item of business today, Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. So I would move that council direct administration to maintain the Northridge Cricket Pitch as a youth cricket pitch. And just speaks of this, we did have the Cricket Club comes committee meeting, and we were talking about how we are building a new, a new full-size cricket pitch in the southeast end of the city, and that is very much a welcome addition, but as sport grows, they do see a need to have a second cricket pitch in town. When tournaments happen, it's, cricket's a very long game, so it'd be hard to get enough games during a weekend with only one pitch. But even more importantly, they want to have a place for youth to play. One of the things we did learn in committee is if this motion passes, there'll actually be a net budget savings to the city, not a huge one, but a small one, because if this motion doesn't pass, then administration will be deactivating that cricket pitch, which actually does have some cost to it. So it's something that would keep a community facility going. It would actually cost a little bit less money, and therefore I would urge council to support it. That being said, I do have a question for administration, if that's appropriate. Ms. Mayor?
Sure, I've got a full queue, but you go ahead, since you're already on the mic.
Sure. For me, the, one thing that they did mention, that the club did mention is they're no longer using the batting cage, at least not using it right now. And I know for me personally, that's something that, I don't think the pitch itself is more disruptive to the neighborhood that I'd like to have, but I do think that batting cage is a little bit closer for my comfort to some of the houses there. And I get why that part of the facility really does bug neighbors. So I guess my question to administration is, if this motion passed, would we, would administration interpret this as just the cricket pitch is open? Or would administration allow them to keep on using that batting cage as well if they chose to in the future?
Ms. Beberdorf?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So they currently have removed the practice pitch from the facility, so it's not being used. The intention was to move it to the new location, once the new location is set up, so that practice pitch would go with the main pitch as well. So at this time, we would not have them using their practice pitch if they remain on that location.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Couple others in the queue, and I have a question as well, so recognize Counselor O'Connor first.
Yes, my question was exactly on the point that Counselor Bressi brought up, is that if they've taken the practice batting cage out, which is great, because there are some neighbors, I'd felt, if they did have tournaments, I'm just wondering how they would deal with not having a practice cage. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's always better to plan ahead and say, here, here's the alternate location for a practice, especially during a tournament. So I just want to make sure that's handled in the right way. Thank you.
Ms. Beberdorf?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We do have a couple alternative locations on that site that had previously been identified, so we could certainly move the practice, or sorry, the batting cage over to one of those other places for tournaments. But right now, they only have the one, so they would have to build another practice cage.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to jump in, because that was along my thoughts. When this originally came to council, it was directly, the Cricket Association was looking for support, but also the neighborhood was looking for support. And so if this motion passes as is, would you leave this status quo? Would you be exploring some of the other locations within that plot of land that were presented to council? What would happen if this motion passes as is?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would look for a direction from council to confirm if they would like to have a batting cage on that same location or not.
Yeah, and so if I recall the presentation, it included a couple of locations sort of lower down that were further away from residential. And so you would be looking for some more specific direction from council?
That would be correct, yes. And one of the locations on the far south side would require the removal of two trees.
Okay. And so there's a few other moving pieces here than simply the motion as is. I guess the other piece, would you be undertaking any neighborhood consultation based on today's motion?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, we would. I know the Cricket Club has done some of that already and spoken to some of the neighbors, but we would continue that conversation if we were to have a batting cage put back on that site.
Okay, my last question, I promise. How do we regulate, you know, the motion is worded as a youth cricket pitch, and let's call it youth 17 and under. It's a public land, it's a public space. How do we prevent a pickup game of adults when we've now said we're calling it a youth cricket location?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we would only be able to control those who are booking the space and using the space for organized play. Anybody that just shows up would be just a general member of the public using it as a green space.
Okay, thanks so much. Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, my concerns are mostly the consultation, and I'm still, I guess I'm curious, if we pass this, I mean, it sounds like you're just, we're maintaining it. What's the consultation for then? Like, if we pass this, the way I'm reading this, this is just going to happen. So are we consulting people that don't know what's happening? Or is there going to be a process for them to come back and say, we actually are very opposed? And then this would come back to council? Just curious about that.
Ms. Beberdorf?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. It would be related to the batting cage, and if they were comfortable with us proceeding with relocating the batting cage on that site.
Okay, and just, and again, the batting cage is the one that seemed to be the concern is, so I know it's been asked, I'm just, I'm confused when I read this motion again, when I look at it that, and if I was a member of the public, it doesn't speak to the batting cage. So I'm just, does administration just need to speak specifically about the batting cage? I just, I'm concerned that we go to consultation, and the batting cage is there, and I'm happy to support it if the batting cage is gone, because this was a big problem for us. Similar to Mayor Clayton, I think we're still going to have potential issues of people just using it as a pitch. That's out of our control, I guess. But I do want to make sure if we're consulting, we're actually listening, and then if we're not doing the batting cages, that can make my, I can support this a little bit easier, because right now I'm struggling with supporting it, to be honest, without knowing that batting cage is not going to be a problem, and that we're not doing consultations, so.
And Ms. Beberdorf, sort of on that, I think if this motion passes as is, you're maintaining it, but there's no direction for any work to be done. And so I'm assuming, I know you're already working with the Cricket Association and finding opportunities, but unless this motion has more direction, you're really just maintaining it for a potential future youth facility, is how I'm reading it. Is that how you're interpreting it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the motion last year at budget was to relocate the entire pitch, including the batting cage, over to the Signature Falls location, so that's what we're proceeding with right now. If it were to be with the motion that's written in the report for a youth-only space, then we would not have the batting cage the way the motion is currently written.
So it would be earmarked for future youth cricket, with no infrastructure per se? Okay. Is that answered your question, Counselor Plot?
Yeah, I guess I'm still struggling. I may be able to hear what my colleagues are thinking, but I might be looking at amending it, just to add a little bit more teeth around the batting cage specifically. And I guess for me, I'd like to have a conversation, come back to council about where is the alternate batting cage going to be at? It was in a report from quite a while ago, but again, I feel weird that we're consulting if we're just going ahead with it. So I'll hear what my colleagues say, but I'll be looking at probably making amendment.
Recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to see an amendment, council direct administration to maintain the Northridge Cricket Pitch as a youth cricket pitch, with the provision that the neighborhood is consulted, and that if a batting cage were to be installed, a location be determined. And so if you want to wordsmith it or not, I think you need.
I would, I would, the only suggestion I might have is that a location has already been determined by administrative reports, so maybe that it, rather than determined, be approved by council.
Be approved, okay. So council direct administration to maintain the Northridge Cricket Pitch as a youth cricket pitch, with consultation with the neighborhood, and a provision that the batting cage would be approved by council as given by administration. I don't know if you can get that.
She can work wonders. Let's see what we get out of it, and we'll come back to that. Counselor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My understanding is the batting cage has already been removed, so it's not there. Your motion, Counselor O'Connor, would be a lot cleaner if you simply said that there could never be a batting cage on the site. I don't think the Cricket Club feels necessary to have one there for their youth program. They indicate, indicated that when they were here last Tuesday, and so I feel that we're kind of beating a horse that's already dead.
Yeah, well, you know, maybe it needed to be. So anyway, I think that makes sense, Counselor Blackmore. What would you suggest the change be?
So there is a motion in the queue. Counselor Blackmore shared her opinion. I'll let you read your motion, but I'll come back to you both and go to Counselor O'Toole first.
I agree 100% behind Counselor Blackmore. Their intent is to be very cooperative with the city, and they know that they disrupted the neighborhood before, so they don't want the batting cage there. It is strictly for youth, so there's not going to be the power behind some of these bats that make a lot of noise. And it's not going to be a lot of noise, because the batting cage is going to be gone. So they are looking extremely forward to getting the new field up and running so they can make things happen.
So Counselor O'Connor's motion is in order. I don't, personally, I don't see any harm leaving it as is, regardless that they don't intend to have a youth cricket batting cage. It's simply stating that if one were ever to be installed, that it needs to be approved by council. So, you know, I don't, however, it's your motion, Counselor O'Connor. If you wish to remove part of it, feel free.
Let's just leave it as is.
Okay. So it would, that, and I'm just looking at Ms. Beberdorf here, so it would, the intent would be to maintain it as a youth cricket pitch. Consultation with the neighborhood is still required, and that if a batting cage is ever installed, it'll come to council for approval. Okay, so based on that motion being in order, discussion or debate or questions for administration? Recognizing Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I actually, I agree with Counselor Blackmore and Counselor O'Connor as far as it goes. The way the motion's laid out, though, it's future-focused. We don't know if the sport of cricket's going to develop past a certain point where they say, well, we already have this practice pitch that we're using for kids, and what we could do is just reinstall the batting cage. At that point, we'd have to go back to the motion if it was changed, according to Gladys Blackmore, and then we wouldn't be looking at it, and we'd say, well, the motion says we don't have it, or we can't have it on that site. Whereas Counselor O'Connor says it would still need to be discussed and vetted through the neighborhood and council before we install a cricket pit. So just like you stated, Mayor Clayton, I think that this motion's perfectly fine, and I think it actually keeps the door open a crack in case the sport of cricket does grow beyond the new pitch, and that they want to start reusing the old pitch. So I'm in support of Counselor O'Connor's motion.
So continue discussion or debate on the amendment. Recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I'm in a bit of a noisy hotel lobby. Sorry if I just missed something, but I confuse, is this saying that consultation has to happen regardless, or consultation only has to happen if there's going to be a new batting cage put back in?
My interpretation is that it's happening regardless, but I will ask Counselor O'Connor his intent.
Yeah, I think it's important just to let the neighborhood know that this is what we've considered, and find out if they have any objections. I don't think so, but it doesn't hurt to ask, and I think our residents deserve to be consulted.
And they will want to know specifically what's coming back, so. Counselor Bressi, go ahead.
Yeah, so in that case, then, you'll want to change the motion more than this, because we are telling the motion, if it got amended this way, would say, hey, administration, you are maintaining this. Oh, and by the way, go out and consult the, consult the community. I don't think we should be consulting the community if we've already directed administration to do something. So I think either we should change consultation to notification, or else we should remove the first part of the, we should take the original motion off the table and not make a decision one way or the other until that consultation happens. But this motion as it's amended, I don't think that would be real consultation.
Yeah, and that was going to be my question. So consultation happens, and the neighborhood comes back and says they don't want to practice youth cricket in the neighborhood at all, they don't want a practice area, they don't want anything. We've already directed administration to go maintain it. So I do believe that, I agree with Counselor Bressi, that there's an opportunity here. It may be simply in two phases. First, we're going to do consultation, and then we're going to direct administration. So I'm looking to see what my colleagues are looking to do with this motion. The amendment is in order, but just understanding the outcomes that may be as a result of the consultation. It may say, no, we don't want this, and then council will have already provided direction. Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, I think Counselor Bressi brings up a good point, to notify the neighborhood that we're proceeding with a practice pitch for youth, and that maybe we don't have to worry about having a batting cage talked about.
Okay, so it's your motion, if you would like to, if council will accept a friendly amendment on Counselor O'Connor's motion, you can change the word from consultation to notification. That's your choice.
I'll support that.
I do have a question then for Ms. Beberdorf. So seeing that the motion potentially could be amended to add with notifications to the neighborhood that the batting cage be approved by council, and maintain the Northridge Cricket Pitch as a youth cricket pitch, in your interpretation, would the pitch be maintained in the upper level, where the batting cages were directly adjacent to the, to the neighbors that had concerns about noise and proximity? Or would the youth cricket pitch be in the lower hood, the lower area, as presented by administration as an alternative?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just the lower part would remain as the youth cricket pitch.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so is everybody clear now then what that would mean? So we're going to notify the neighbors, we're going to keep in mind that if it ever is a, there's ever intent to have a batting cage, that it has to get approved by council before being installed, and that administration will maintain that as a youth cricket pitch in the lower area, not directly adjacent to the backyard neighbors that initially had had noise and proximity concerns. Recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Yeah, I just read it, and I think I'm okay with it. They are going to be playing games with the youth. It's not a practice place. This is a place where the youth can play. So make sure that we use the word youth cricket pitch instead of a practice pitch. And yeah, their intent is not to have any kind of batting cage there at all.
So any questions, concerns? I have one more question, and maybe it's a better question for Chief Lemieux. If the, if this grows so much in youth cricket, and it becomes extremely busy, the neighborhood is bothered by this, they were simply notified, they weren't consulted, where would we be at that point? Youth cricket's happening, we're maintaining it, it's going on a regular basis, it becomes a troublesome area, then what happens?
Thank you for the question. So I think the options council would have is similar to what we did last year, is to find an alter location and move the cricket to a different location.
Perfect, thank you for that. So I see no one else in the queue. Counselor O'Connor, do you wish to close, or are you good? Okay, call the question.
Plot in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor? Sorry. Well, that was the amendment, my apologies. So now, that was the voting on the amendment, so now to the main motion as amended. Opportunity for discussion or debate on the main motion as amended, seeing no one in the queue. I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor Plot in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. One reason I really enjoy this committee is because we get to hear from various community partners of the city funds to hear how they're doing and what they're up to. And we got to hear from both the Grand Prairie Regional Sport Connection and from the Prairie Galleries Society about the fine work that their staff and their volunteers are doing. Really cool to have a sport group and a culture group in at the same time, kind of showing two sides of the same coin of things that happen in the community to improve quality of life for everybody. So that's always enjoyable, getting those presentations. I also want to highlight from the chief service area update, that we, that throughout the budget engagement events that recently happened, between both online and in person, we had 900 residents touch base with us. So really appreciate the residents who took the time to share their thoughts, really appreciated minute. who took the time to share their thoughts, really appreciate administration and councillors enabling them to share those thoughts. And I look forward to hearing a report from administration with the key takeaways from that. Then the last thing I'll highlight is administration is well in the process of getting ready for our municipal election in October. And one thing they've been doing is hosting a couple candidate information sessions. The second and final one is August 20. It will give potential candidates for council a high level overview of city finances. So I think it's a really great opportunity for people who want to be able to speak intelligently about the city budget, and more importantly, be ready to hit the ground running should they be fortunate enough to get elected. They should be attending this, in my opinion. So I hope that potential candidates will considerate it. It's August 20, and pre-registration is required. Thank you.
Thanks for that update, councillor Bressi. That's appreciated. Moving on to the rest of the agenda. There is no correspondence for today. Now we'll move to item 10, our delegation business. Two delegations here today, the first one being Helping Hands Society, opportunity for questions for administration, or any direction that may be provided. So recognizing councillor Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Really appreciate both delegations coming in, Helping Hands Society to give us an update on food security and what they've been doing, and the Alberta Special Olympics to bring in all their athletes and give us the most rousing rendition of Vote Canada I think I've ever heard in this council chambers. But besides that, I didn't hear any business coming out unless my colleagues disagree. So I just moved that we receive both delegations for information.
That motion is in order, but I will just give my colleagues a chance in case somebody did have business that may be arising. Seeing no one in the queue or no one online, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. No notices of motion today. There will be no recess. And I will now go to council member reports, and I'll start with councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just quickly go through a few events. I'll highlight one, Canada Day Parade was lots of fun, very hot while attended. We had an ICC meeting with our colleagues at the county where we continue to discuss regional initiatives. Attended the grand opening of Wendell Clark's, and quite honestly, it was really a fun event in that he did a question and answer session, and very candid with his answers. And it was just a lot of fun to hear his take on a lot of his career with that. We also met with Pride Society, had a stakeholder meeting, which was great conversation. The other highlight is councillor Berg and I ended up up in Duncan Lake First Nations last week for a day trip. And it was a lot of fun. It was interesting to talk to Chief Virginia Gladue and the councillors Jennifer Testowitz and Keith Lawrence with our communities, experience some growth. It was very welcoming, and they even had councillor Berg and I get up and dance. So I mean, we had lots of fun, heard lots of good conversations, chatted with the elders. Maybe councillor Berg can add some more. We had a great conversation with the RCMP lady that was attached there as well. So great event, and it was appreciated to be part of it.
Thanks for that, councillor Plott. Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Canada Day Parade was really awesome. I've had people ask me if it was the best attendance we've ever had at Canada Day Parade. I think it's kind of hard to make that determination, but there was certainly big crowds. And thank you to our administration for ensuring that, for the first time in history that I'm aware of, we did not run out of candy. Excellent. I also attended the grand opening at Wendell Clark. I attended the Special Olympics opening reception and opening ceremonies. I was really impressed by the welcoming, the parents from the children who came from Airdrie, who had the big faces of their athletes and big signs held up on sticks. I thought that was a really cool idea. And certainly was great to see for the first group that walked into the opening ceremonies. I did attend two medal presentations. I gave medals at Legion Field for foot races on Saturday, and at Rotary Field for soccer on yesterday, Sunday. And I think that all sports should really take a lesson from Special Olympics on how to receive your bronze, silver, or gold medal with the absolute maximum amount of enthusiasm. It was very touching and heartwarming to have that kind of response. And then today, I met with a candidate who is running for election in the fall. And I mention that because if you're listening to this, and you are thinking you would like to run for election as a councillor, or mayor, or in the county, or the school board, don't hesitate to reach out to the current sitting councillors. We would all enjoy having a conversation. And the more information you have going into the fall, the better off you would be as a candidate. So I really encourage anyone who's listening who's thinking along those lines to reach out. You can reach us through the city website. All of our contact information is there. So thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, councillor Blackmore. I'll go to councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I've been on the road on a half working trip, half family vacation for the last little bit. So I haven't got to as many community events I would have loved to, but have been to a few other interesting meetings. One thing I did get to do while I was in town was attend Inters municipal Collaboration Committee with Mayor Clayton and councillor Plott. Always appreciate getting to sit down with our county colleagues. I also got to attend an RMA district meeting for the Pembina River District as part of my Alberta municipalities duties. And it's just to hear what's going on with counties throughout the province. Another engagement I got to do is the province's redoing and how it calculates and how much money is collected through the police funding model, which is money it collects from non-cities and non-large towns to pay for the RCMP policing they receive. And it's something that I think very much should be on city councillors' radar. The reason being, because as we all know, cities have to pay somewhere between 90 to 100% of the cost to police themselves. And right now, counties, empties, smaller towns, the villages, they only pay about 12% of the cost to police them. So our residents get kind of double taxed for policing. We pay municipal taxes to receive our own policing, and we also pay provincial taxes to pay for policing in rural areas. And so I think this is something where it really has significant chance to impact the amount of taxes our residents pay. So even though it doesn't directly impact us, I think it's something that we should be paying attention to. So I definitely appreciate getting to be part of that consultation. The last thing I want to highlight, though, is I did get to go to Canada Day. And this year, when we've got a southern neighbor that wants to take us over, and when we've got people in our province who want us to leave this mighty fine country, Canada Day did hit just a little bit different. And so I really appreciate getting to be out there to celebrate our fine nation with our community, and really appreciate members of our administration, and all the volunteers and staff through park organizations that put on an excellent day for our community. But more importantly, I'm so thankful for thousands upon thousands upon thousands of residents of our community and of our region that came out to really celebrate this nation together. So that was a real highlight of my summer so far. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Bressi. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, it was a busy week, but lots of big events that were going on. Canada Day was awesome as usual. I have to throw out a big thank you to all of our staff and administration who helped prepare us on the floats for all the candy. I think we actually got away with a few bags of candy this year, and instead of running completely out. So thank you for that to our CEO, Shane Burke, as well for ensuring that. I'm to our youth council, who really helped council keep up with the candy demand and the large crowds. A lot of you might not know this about me, but between the years of 2006 and 2010, actually 2011, I was the volunteer coordinator to help do all the float staging onto the streets for Canada Day. And so that was good. So from that time, I've seen the crowds of Canada Day, and I have never seen so many people at our parade. It was incredible. In fact, I felt really, really proud to be a Grand Prairie on that day celebrating Canada Day. But of course, you know, we got around the first turn, and I was already four floats behind, running behind to catch up to the float. That happens to me every year. I have this propensity to just want to give every kid candy. And if I see somebody, I'm saying hello in the quick word. But I got to say thanks to the GPPS officer who allowed me to jump in his car, and gave me a ride up to the float very slowly. But he was driving faster than I was walking. And to the ETS, oh, sorry, not the ETS, the GP Transit driver who wouldn't let me on the bus. And he opened the door, he said, it's because you're older than 17, which I thought was really good because I started shouting out to the streets, hey, free transit first, it's 17 and under, which was really good, among other things. I did take off early from the parade, as you know, it was a really hot day, as councillor Plott intimated. And maybe I'm intimating too much here, but I looked down at my shirt, and I was sweating, but only from my belly. And I was quite embarrassed. So I turned off at the museum, I dried off, poured water all over myself, and headed off to the cookie. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm TMI, it's TMI. But I headed off to the cookie giveaway, and that was great. I was the first councillor there. So I was the only councillor that actually got to see the marching band play the full set in front of our stage area. They were on time, but the parade was a long one. So eventually, the rest of the council came forward. And once the mayor got there, I went off to do my duty in the dunk tank and get soaked on behalf of all the politicians. And showtime. In fact, you know, the shows were great, the entertainment was great, the activities were great. The only bit of feedback, and I'm going to mention it here because I don't want to put a great cloud on it, but I want us to always get better, is I had several, I had several people contact me or come up to me at the event and ask if in the future we could move the Beer Garden stage. Because in front of the Ap theater, it seemed to cover about one third of the sightlines of all the people who were sitting in the field. And there was plenty of space closer to the trees to move that over, to generate your lines, and to support the local business that was providing that service. But inside the middle of the field, right in front of the stage, it just created too much of a block. So we had a lot of people squeezing over to one side. And I noticed that myself when I went there later for fireworks. After that, it was a pretty good week, but I went away to Edmonton for Alberta Seniors Community Housing Association Strategic Plan. And then I rushed home to be a part of the Special Olympics, where I got to take part in several of the events, including being a bocce official and giving out medals to our winners at the track and field portion of Legion Field, and also doing emcee duties at the city council's sponsored bocce field medal awards presentation. So I was pretty honored to be able to do that. And I want to give one thank you before I go off here. I already thanked Lisa Kirkoff. I had her on my list for getting us all together. But it was a bit of a mix up and confusion, probably on my end, waiting to hear back where I'd be handing out medals. And so I gave a general, okay, I can do these events, I'd like to go to these events. So I got set up to do the bowling medal presentations, and also officiating bocce. My understanding in the beginning was just Saturday, but when I realized it was Saturday and Sunday, and now it was interfering with it, I reached out to my good friend and current neighbor, Kevin O'Toole, and I said, hey, man, you're doing the bocce, I'm doing the bowling, can we do a switcheroo? And he was pretty much like, no problem. And so to me, it wasn't a big deal. But when I got to Legion Field to do bocce for day two of officiating for the bronze and gold medal games, I was approached by two coaches and two of the teams that were participating. And because I didn't arrive there till about quarter after nine, and a lot of the other officials were there, they weren't sure I was even coming. And in fact, if Kevin never switched with me, I would have never been there. So it was important for me that Kevin could do it. But I didn't realize how important it was to our athletes. And I didn't realize how big of a difference one person can make when you're just out there being yourself. And so when everyone expressed their relief that I was there to officiate and to do that, I couldn't even be more grateful to councillor O'Toole, because not only was he a great ambassador for all the Special Olympics events, but he went out of his way to ensure that, without even knowing it, that he was going to make the day of about 16 athletes and four coaches who were really looking forward to having that official that made them feel comfortable out on the field, which I didn't realize until I got there on the Sunday. So Kevin, thank you so much for all that you do for our community. You're a big team player, you're a big guy, and you're making people smile even when you don't know it. So I couldn't be more grateful for you after finding that out on Sunday. Thank you for all you do.
Councillor O'Toole.
Now, how do I follow that, right? On July 1, I attended the Canada Day Parade. And it's already been discussed, we did a successful parade. And instead of cake this year, we handed out cookies. And I'm not sure the number, but I think it was 1,200 or something like that. I also attended the Grand Prairie Triathlon. Now, if you have never seen that, you got to go there and watch these little people come across the line, and the one little girl come across, and she did not look healthy. She was white as a ghost. And I said, here, we'll give you some water. And anyhow, she got a little sick, but mom and dad were there, and the first aid person was there. And she was just a little dehydrated being out in that sun for that length of time. But everything was all done. She talked to me 10 minutes later, and she was pretty happy that she got that water and the medal. So that was great. Shortly after the triathlon, we had a Special Olympics last formal meeting that we met in public. And then after that, it was all on Zoom to get things done quick. Champions Gym, they come here every summer, and they do a summer camp. And part of the camp is to be at City Hall. I helped out with, special appearance, right? Yeah. So I was at that twice, once on a special appearance. But anyhow, it was a lot of fun, a lot of kids. We actually had a topic of what are we going to do with the rabbits in town? So that was pretty good. And I went also to the grand opening of Wendell Clark's classic grill and bar ribbon cutting. The Chamber Commerce had a ribbon cutting as well for Smart Hub Insurance, as well as the 24/7 mobile downtown gas station. So there was lots of ribbon cuttings last week. Stakeholder engagement with the Pride, or stakeholder meeting with the Pride Society, a very informative meeting. And I think it went really well for both sides. What else? We had a kickoff supper for the Special Olympics Alberta team that come up here to support us and supervise, to make sure that we were doing things appropriately in their bylaws and stuff. We had two Special Olympics flag raising, or one flag raising and one VIP reception. Opening ceremonies for Special Olympics Alberta was there. And what a fantastic Special Olympics. What I attended is tried to attend. I did athletics, so long jump and 100 meter. I tried to watch some bocce ball, made a few appearances there. Powerlifting, and that was done at the, I don't want to remember the name, what's the name of that? It used to be the Arc Center, it's new.
Kiara.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. It's just a new thing. And yeah, powerlifting, what a fantastic sport. We don't have a powerlifting coach in Grand Prairie, so there was no powerlifting athletes from Grand Prairie in that. We cooked burgers and hot dogs for the family of athletes. That was exceptionally well attended. Everybody that said they were going to be there was there. And when we were a little bit slow getting started, we suggested that they go to the museum, walk through. And I could not believe the gratitude that these people had. Some people come from Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Calgary, and all over, actually, even Northwest Territories were there. And to sit down, have a burger, talk to the other parents, and see the museum was just, they were very, very gracious. I watched a little bit of the golf finals, got to see Dougie smoke the ball down on the first hole, and handed out medals in many classes of bowling. I thought honestly, it was going to be like three medals, maybe four times. It was like 190 medals. I was there, I thought 15, 20 minutes tops, maybe half an hour. I was there for a little over an hour and a little bit. And I also handed out medals in athletics. So I was pretty busy, but I think everybody on council was fairly busy as well. Once again, I can't say enough about how administration and all our staff that come together to make this one heck of a surprise of a good event for a lot of people in the province. So thank you.
All right. Thanks for that, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So around Special Olympics, I did get out Saturday morning in the wind to the long jump, and was hoping to catch some bocce, but I was in between. So there was about a 40, 45 minute wait. So I decided to head over to the Eastling Centre as well, where I actually really enjoyed the basketball. For each basket, the entire building just lit up. And it was so much fun to watch. And just the celebrations, the try and everything around that was amazing. Swimming as well. Every single competitor was cheered on by the entire crowd. And that's just the way sports should be. And so
And so a real good feel-good weekend around that. The Canada Day Parade, in my mind, that was the biggest one that we've ever had, and if you want to see the cultural diversity of our community, you just head out to a Canada Day Parade. It was amazing to see the turnout, gave cookies. I, believe it or not, am not the athlete that I was 35 years ago, so running that parade route is a little bit of a challenge for me today. I took two bottles of water and most of it went on the back of my head and down my shirt just to help cool off, but then at the cookies, councillor O'Connor started a water fight, and so we had a little bit of fun around that, and you got Mayor Clayton included in that, and you got in trouble for that, so. Mike's just a troublemaker. This morning, we actually had a few councillors at the ribbon cutting for the Lemonel Place Cafe out in the side area by Canfor. Highly recommend the London Fog. And as mentioned, my big highlight was, again with councillor Plot, heading out to Duncan's First Nation. We did that on Thursday and were there the full day, or basically from 11:45 till about 6:00. Fed us well. Duncan's First Nation, for those who don't know, is east of Fairview. Their chief and council has their elections tomorrow. There was also entertainment, talent shows, but there was a number of businesses that had set up, many of them from Grand Prairie, doing some education and some recruiting, including Kiara. So we actually had a chance to thank them in person for the sponsorship. They were well aware of the sponsorship, and they're just trying to make greater community impacts by attending events such as that, but also sponsoring the building. We did chat with elders, we did chat with the RCMP member there, they've made some huge, huge inroads over the last four years to make the community a much more friendly and welcoming place for their people. But I also left very early in the morning so that I could also take in a little bit of our community around us. So I did stop in Sexmouth and visited the Sexmouth Museum and wandered around there, and I was actually part of that museum board for 11 years, and heard the passing of Dr. David Leonard, who used to be Alberta's chief historian, and was a huge asset to the peace country advocating on our behalf, but also extremely knowledgeable too. So he passed away, one of the museum homes that is in Sexmouth is called Paskowski House, but before the Paskowskis lived in it, and of course Walter, former MLA and egg minister, but that was also David Leonard's house, and so that's now a museum piece. Then I went to Dunnvegan, walked around there and really enjoyed the morning, it was a picture-perfect morning at Dunnvegan, but I went into the interpretive centre and I was glancing at books, and without exception, every single book was either authored or co-authored by Dr. David Leonard. So although we've lost a huge asset to our community, who advised even here at the city of Grand Prairie on turning the Centre for Creative Arts into a historical resource, losing Dr. David Leonard was, will impact us in the future, but the number of books that he's co-authored or authored is staggering, so he's left his knowledge for us, and for that I'm grateful. Thanks Mayor Clayton.
Thanks to councillor Berg, councillor O'Connor rather.
Oh cool, I like that. Anyway, the Canada Day Parade, everybody spoke about it. I really loved the enjoyment and the excitement that people had for the parade. I was thankful that I was on the float, and so I got them all ramped up. Everybody else was coming by to get misted. I loved handing out the cookies, it was a lot less messier than it was in years past. I had more cake on me than Gladys did. So attended the Grand Prairie Triathlon, and just to see those kids get out there, swim, bike and run, and then come in and just, they were so excited when they got their medals. Went to Wendell Clark's classic grill, a grand opening, and I asked him, I said, "How many fights did you have?" And he says, "About 150 fights." And they kept showing scenes of him doing that, you know, that was a day inside. I asked the one question, I said, "Did the coach ever send you out to, you know, pick on someone?" And he said, "Never." And I'm going, "Okay." So went to a number of ribbon cuttings, 24/7 mobile, smart hub insurance, attended the Grand Prairie Centre for newcomers with councillor, yeah, you. It's too late in the day. And had a meeting with the stakeholder meeting with the Pride Society, the flag raising on the Special Olympics and the grand opening. There was so much excitement in the room, and there were just, they were screaming "Oh Canada" top of their lungs. It was tremendous to see. Attended the Filipino basketball tournament that brought teams from Alberta and BC together, and it was a great tournament. And went to the ribbon cutting at the Lemonel Place, and they actually made me a decaf, so it was very good. And then the last was in Invest North West, our committee that meets with the MD, the county, and the city, and looking at what's going on in the future. So that's my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that councillor O'Connor. I just want to echo the sentiment and thanks to all the individuals from our organisation who put together an exceptional Canada Day Parade. It was great to not run out of candy, so thank you for that, but also just the organising of it, and the parade marshal Doug Edie did an excellent job in our first inaugural parade marshal, so Doug's been on a roll. Between that and a gold medal in the last couple of weeks, he's feeling pretty good. So on that, actually, if you get a chance, I encourage you to read an article written by Tina from the Daily Herald Tribune. She did a little highlight on Doug in regards to what it's, you know, what it is that community members like to do, what community members do to build a better place, and so thank you to Tina for highlighting Doug in that article. I also wanted to just say I attended the ICC meeting with councillor Bressi and Plot, continued collaboration with our municipal partners, and I think we're doing great work together that's valuable for the region. That being said, also attended the Invest North West committee meeting, and you will see more to come from that in the near future. Was in Calgary for a few days in regards to meetings during the stampede, met with Minister McDougall, Advanced Ed Minister, Minister Williams, Municipal Affairs, Minister Newdorf, Electricity and Affordability, met with the Mustard Seed Group, ACO, Oventov, attended Minister Dreschen's event where Premier Ford, Premier Mo and Premier Smith all spoke, as well as Minister RG Sigurdsson's event, had conversations about Caribou and opportunities in our region with Minister Schultz, and had some time with Premier Smith in regards to public safety. I, but last but not least, and as we mentioned earlier, this past weekend was an exceptional event for our community. It was great for our organisation and our council, but you know, really just to see the smiling faces day after day. I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of council at the opening ceremonies, and you could feel the energy in that room, was absolutely incredible. Presented medals at swimming, which was extremely fun, and brought greetings at the athlete dance, and so thank you to all of our members of our organisation and our community that made these games possible. We know these games don't go out, go on without incredible input from leaders as well as volunteers and sponsors and members of our community, so thank you. And to those of you who came to Grand Prairie for the first time, I'm pretty sure you had an exceptional weekend, and we hope to see you back here again soon. So with that, I will conclude my meeting, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.